All right, we'll call the meeting of the Isanty City Council to order here for Tuesday, March 21st. If we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Doing roll call, all council members are present. Do we have any public comment? Hearing no public comment, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mayor, if I may, we do have a modification to the agenda. From when it was posted, we do have some items that are added, but we do also have one removal, which is Isanty County Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Presentation will be on the second meeting in April.
Okay.
Then there's the addition of adding approval, approved plans and ordering advertisement for bid for the Isanty Indoor Arena and City Hall Roof Replacement Project, adding resolution to consider approving purchase of accounts payable workflow software, adding resignation, accepting resignation of community development specialists, and adding approval of the hiring of full-time police secretary position. Thank you.
Motion to adopt with the changes.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Lundin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Any council, or excuse me, I've got, looking for a proclamation here for Week of the Young Child, April 1st through the 7th, and I'm just gonna go ahead and read this proclamation. So, whereas many local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 1st through April 7th, and whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities include early literacy programs that can be, that can provide a foundation of learning for children in Isanty, Minnesota, and whereas teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Isanty, Minnesota deserve thanks and recognition, and whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures, I, James Gordon, Mayor of the City of Isanty, do hereby proclaim April 1st through April 7th, 2023, as the Week of the Young Child, and encourage all citizens to work to make a good investment in early childhood in Isanty, Minnesota. All right. Moving on to approving the city council meeting minutes from March 7th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, motion from Councilman Lundin and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries three zero. Announcements, Park, Recreation and Culture Board Meeting, Tuesday, March 28th at 6:00 PM, City Council Meeting, Tuesday, April 4th at 7:00 PM, Economic Development Authority Meeting, Tuesday, April 4th, following the council meeting, and city offices will be closed Friday, April 7th in observance of Good Friday. Do we have any council committee reports?
I do have one. So, the Chamber of Commerce met this month, and Mayor Gordon presented on the City of Isanty, its current and future development, and other interesting items about the City of Isanty. There are a few members of the audience that had questions about some of the developments, including the new PD building, and I just thought it was good to get some information out to some of the business owners and residents of the town. So, good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got one on fire district meeting. I see we have two of our newest recruits sitting in the back of the audience. Welcome. Thanks, guys, for stepping in. So, last month, we did a pilot program. So, I want to use the right words. There's key words that when somebody calls an incident up to dispatch, there's key words that they will determine at dispatch if the fire department needs to be sent out on a run. I'm not gonna get into specifics of the calls, Nate, what, you know, what the key words or anything, but so we tried that program for 30 days. So, just for run counts as of January, there was 87 runs counts total for the whole fire district for the month of January. February, the run counts for the whole month of February for the whole district was 56. And I'm not gonna elaborate on the other entities, but the City of Isanty's is a 50% reduction in the fire department making those run calls. And how, without getting really elaborate on how it goes, Chief Jankovic will go on with, when he does his annual report, that'll explain how that's, how the run counts affect what we pay. If we keep seeing that reduction in that, it'll save the city a large sum of money. You know, it goes by all the run counts too, so it's not just generally specific ours, but it could save us considerable amount of money. And 99% feedback was all positive on that, I'd have to say, in my opinion. There was a couple, there was one that was concerned with their new recruits, that they're not gonna get to see certain things. Well, it's, you know, it's getting to be farming season. You know, they're gonna probably receive their share, fair share of runs. So, it, you know, I don't think they need to run out and see somebody that'd be lifted up out of a chair or the, you know, I got chest pains and indigestion. I mean, that's just putting it mildly and explaining. So, kudos to Chief Jankovic and for coming up with this program. I think it's, you know, we gotta give it time. We voted now to extend that for another two months to see how it goes. There are some concerns that, you know, if, is the dispatcher, you know, are they determining if it's a fair thing? Well, in my, in my opinion, and my, my words were, they're just another beep away before they can get there. And nine times out of 10, they're gonna be there within a minute. You know, our response time in the City of Isanty last month was three minutes. So, within three minutes of getting the call when they're there, that's, isn't really a lot of time. I mean, that's pretty short. I mean, it's, it's, so I, I think, you know, if all goes well and knock on wood, I think that program is, you know, was, working is very well. There's a lot of fire districts or fire departments that do not do medicals. You know, back when I was on the fire department, we were doing medicals back then. So, we've always kind of grandfathered into that. If we didn't do medicals, this thing would be way short. I mean, because there's, you know, fire prevention has been huge. So, other than grass fires, there's not much you can do about that, but house fires and stuff are on a decline. They have been for many years. So, I think that program's working out, and, you know, it does have my full support, so.
Oh, I just mean, obviously, it moved, moved on from this to another two months. I mean, was that support mutual across the, the fire board, or?
I think, personally, I'd rather see it put in effect right now, but there's a few people on the board that, there's basically just a couple that wanna see it really develop. And yet again, 30 days isn't a lot of time to make that change. You know, unfortunately, I wish, you know, accidents, if we could get rid of accidents, if we could bill them out and not be billed as a run count for that, and we could bill all accidents, we'd even cut that number considerably more. You know, but unfortunately, we cannot, for more than just one reason, we can't do it. So, you know, you think about it, how many times does somebody get in an accident on 565? How many of those people actually live in the City of Isanty? Or even in the county, for that matter? You know, and we're, as it happens in our area, and we're paying for it. You know, I'm not trying to be cynical or trying to put somebody down for it, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's just the way it is.
I do, I do have a question on that. So, say if Travis or one of the PD gets there and they need fire assistance, can they call that in then?
Yes, absolutely.
So, then you got the three-minute response time from that.
Yeah.
That, that should be fine.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, if somebody's having chest pains and they're prone to having heart attacks, the fire district is gonna go on that call. It all depends on what the circumstances are.
Yep.
All right. Any other council committee reports? All right, we'll move on to business item K1, Isanty Area Joint Fire District Annual Report Presentation.
Thank you, everybody. For those who don't know me, there's some new faces on council now. I'm Al Jankovic. I'm the fire chief. Annually, I put together a, a report, and I like to present it to council, and other firefighters help me present it to the other owners of the fire district, just to show you what we've done for the last year. Kind of a snapshot of, of our runs, our financials, et cetera. So, tonight, I'm here just to go over that briefly with you all and kind of show you the report. So, if we can open it up together to the first page, you'll see it's on the screen there. I imagine you all can see it. That is our roster as of 12/31/22. So, YOS on that graph is Years of Service. You'll see some zeros in there. Those are people that do not yet have one year of service. So, the Years of Service is rounded down to Complete Years of Service, which is why our this year new hires who are here tonight, thanks for coming, unfortunately, aren't able to be listed on that report. Next page, page two, Run Volume. You'll see we had 1,246 total runs across our fire district in the City of Isanty. You accounted for 569 of them. On the bottom of page two, it's a pretty simple line graph that shows our call volume from year to year, a pretty consistent increase overall. The next page.
Chief, if I could interrupt for just a second, if you hit this spacebar, it'll go with, and then the public will see. Thank you.
So.
Technology.
Any questions on this, guys? Sorry. The next pages, three, four, eh, three and four, show our run types for the entire district. So, you'll see on that, we responded to 54 total fires, which accounted for 4.3% of our total runs. The big thing that Councilman Lundin was discussing was our pilot program. We are testing to see how things would change across the fire district if we limited our response to the non-critical EMS calls. You'll see that 862 times we responded to EMS calls last year, which accounts for 69.2% of our runs. The large majority of the times, we are running on fire calls, it is EMS-related. That doesn't show which ones were non-emergent, which we're trying to filter out during this pilot program, but 69.2% of our calls overall were EMS-related. So, pretty self-explanatory report showing the total 1,246 calls sorted by call types. The next report is our training for the year. It's just a simple list of all the different classes that the fire district took. As a whole, we meet at least monthly to perform training, so that's a list of the different classes we selected in 2022. The next report, Service Area. This is right from the assessor's office with current populations and valuations. These are for the specific sections in Isanty County that we service. So, the yellow line is the outline of our service area. Anything within that yellow box are sections that we protect. A total of 157 square miles and 6,228 households. The next page is our financials. I won't go through that, but it does show that our 2022 budget in entirety was $700,208. We had a pretty successful year with grants. We were able to receive $56,545.82 in grants, which we're proud of, as well as the donations, which totaled $15,379.48. The pictures, just briefly, everybody always likes pictures, so I try to find some fresh ones in there. The two pickups are small rescues. We actually just got in service probably a month ago. They're Ford Ranger four-wheel-drive pickups, which replace a couple of Chevy Impalas that we retired. The next picture is one of our newer firefighters, Suzanne Danille, doing some fire prevention alongside our ladder truck. Next fire is just a random, or picture is a random car fire in September, and then the bottom picture is some brave firefighters that walked the entire Jubilee Days Parade this year in their turnouts. The next report is all of our capital assets, so that's all of our equipment that we own, all the trucks, trailers, et cetera. The buildings are all owned, as you know, except for Station 1, which is under contract for us to buy in a few years. The next report zooms in on the City of Isanty. So, it's the same graph as we saw before, only it is specific to your 569 runs in 2022. So, if you look under category three, 416 of our calls in the City of Isanty were EMS-related, 73.1%. So, that again is a big number and a big percentage of our run counts, and we're just trying to zero in on that to ensure we are being as efficient as we can and not duplicated by other services that are dispatched to those calls. The pictures, again, are, the top one is some of our volunteers at the county fair, and then the bottom one is not a complete picture, but a majority of the volunteers who donated their time at our rodeo this year in July. The back picture, the back page, is in regards to 2023 for the City of Isanty. You'll see our 2023 budget for the fire district is $789,048. Your contribution, after we run all of our data through the formula, is $305,310. We bill that quarterly in the amount of $76,327.50. So, when we do the math, the City of Isanty's portion of our budget is 39%, and you account for 46% of our overall call volume. And then the bottom picture, I know some people have thought we were standing there after a fire drinking beer, however, it's not. Those are cans of water that we were donated by Anheuser-Busch, and one of the stipulations was that we needed to post on social media that we were drinking the water and using it for fire rehab. So, that was actually a fire in the City of Isanty last summer. That was the crew who performed the majority of the work there with the help of the PD. Thank you again for that. And then we just took a simple picture, so. That's my report. Feel free to ask questions. I have plenty of paper copies on the back desk if you want to take one home. I'm always available via phone or email. If you come up with a question afterwards and you wanna bring it up or run an idea by me, I'm always open to suggestions.
What, just curiosity, what question for you?
Yeah.
The new duty Rangers?
Yes.
Are, are you gonna use them for grass fires too?
Nope, we are not. They do not have water in them. They're replacing our cars, so they have a medical bag, an AED, self-contained breathing apparatus. We go on carbon monoxide checks with them, so we have contained air if the atmosphere was bad enough that we weren't able to breathe room air, and some force entry tools. That's all we carry with them. What has come in handy besides the four-wheel drive in the winter?
Right.
Is we're able to use the bed of the pickup for after a fire, when we have so much loose tools, equipment that needs to be decontaminated.
Right.
Before we put it back in the truck, we throw it in the back of the Ranger, bring it back to the station, decon it, get it back in service, and then load the, the engine with the clean equipment. So, it's been very, very helpful for that.
I have, I have a couple of questions for you. So, the medical assist calls, those are obviously a huge portion of the, the budget, and when I did my PD ride along, there was a medical call, and it was like a child that was having cramps or something, and that, the fire department showed up, and I could just tell by the looks on their faces, they were just annoyed because it was, you know, later at night, and it's like, I get it, they don't want to keep going to the redundancies of these, these calls, so I think it's great. But do you know what the average cost of a medical assist call would be? Like, if you were to say $50, $100 in terms of, I mean, I know it's hard to extrapolate, but just average or guess?
It is, and I wish I had a better memory, because we zeroed in on those dollars when we had the discussion at the fire board meeting.
Okay.
I could definitely get that to you, but I don't have it on the top of my head.
Okay, no problem.
And to go back to the medical call that you witnessed, that, those, I don't mean to sound like those calls aren't important.
Correct.
Because somebody somewhere called 911 for that, that medical emergency, and I have no doubt that it was emergent. However, a lot of those calls are handled well by the ambulance, and if they're non-critical, that's one thing that we're trying to filter out and, and determine if it is efficient for us to be there.
Yep.
At 2:00 in the morning, we'll say, when that firefighter needs to get up and go to work at 5:00 AM.
Yep. And then I, I have another question. So, I see the 10-year fire call volume history. Now, do you know with other fire departments, is the, I mean, we've doubled in the last 10 years, or the Isanty Fire Department has doubled in the last 10 years. Is that typical for most departments, or is that just a?
Nationwide.
Okay, interesting.
It's very typical.
Is it more medical than fire? Because it's, Steve had said there's less fires, but it's more medical. Okay.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay. Do most fire departments respond, like redundant, like, like we have in the past, or is that?
I wouldn't say most, but it's not uncommon for fire departments to respond to medicals. Either, there's lots of different criteria that would determine if a fire department would respond. It really comes down to you all and what the taxpayers want for a level of service. But there's metro fire departments that will roll an engine to a medical routinely. We have tried to be as efficient as we can, and that's why we have small rescues, Chevy Impalas and Ford Rangers for going to those small medicals. But now that is starting to tax us as well. So, another, I guess, what I was getting at is another reason why fire departments would respond, and this is somewhat in our county as well, is the ambulance is further away from residents, from 911 calls. So, if a fire department can respond and, and provide some first aid, that is, that is a critical measure, especially if on a critical call, that could be life-changing. In our area, we're lucky enough that the ambulance is typically dispatched from Cambridge. So, if it is a, a major medical, we are still responding to those, and we're paged out, just like we have in the past during this program, where dispatch, if they are told that somebody is choking or having an active heart attack, something like that, we're gonna respond, as Steve said, in three or four minutes in the City of Isanty. But the other calls where the, they can wait for the ambulance to come from Cambridge, and it won't be life-changing to wait for them. We're seeing how it works for them, just to rely on the ambulance.
Good idea.
Good questions. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Al.
All right, so we're moving on to what would now be K2, the Resolution to Consider Extending Agreements with Bill's Quality Cleaning for Cleaning Services.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, this item is coming back. It was discussed at the last city council meeting. Bill's Quality Cleaning has been cleaning city facilities since 2002. The most recent contract they held, not in the beginning of that contract, but we did go with a lesser bidder, however, they were not able to fulfill the contract. Thus, Bill's Quality Cleaning did pick up that remainder of that contract in July of 2021. Staff is recommending to, at the last council meeting, staff was recommending to extend the agreement to procure the services of Bill's Quality Cleaning for Cleaning, City Hall, the liquor store, and the police department. The desire of council at that time was to look into if there could be less services utilized by Bill's Quality Cleaning, which would be, as staff understood it, to clean every other week. So, Ms. Strand did reach out, our city clerk, to reach out to, to Bill Krieger, and he was not interested in cleaning every other week.
Yeah, I mean, and I think this was really my, my issue with it, was that I think if we do every other week and we can find someone that wants to do that, we're saving, you know, roughly $4,000 a year. And so, so it was pretty, pretty substantial. I mean, if he's not interested in, in doing it, then he doesn't necessarily have to bid for it. But I think, you know, is it something that we want to take out for, for bids and see if there is somebody that's interested in doing that? And he may say he's not interested, but he may change his mind as well if, if, if we decide to go back out. But, and I think he's done a great job. I don't think there's any issue with, with any of the work. I mean, it's just, to me, I mean, it's, we only have large groups come into this area basically every other week when we have a council meeting, and so when do we need to do a deep thorough cleaning of a room that, you know, hardly gets used, or a bathroom that hardly gets used? You know, I mean, it's, you know, obviously, the, the behind the scenes where the staff is at is used more often, but at the same time, I mean, it's, I don't know that I've ever walked in there and thought, boy, this looks messy or dirty or anything like that, where it couldn't have waited another week, you know what I mean? So, so I don't know, it just was a, see what you guys think about it, but, I mean, I'd, I'd be open to, to going out and seeing if we are able to get a bid for, for doing every other week and, and see what we can do for savings there.
Problem is, is we couldn't get anybody to bid on it before. They're not gonna do it.
How many, how many bids did we have before? We had, you said one other one that was actually cheaper, but then we had Bill.
In my time here, when we've done the contract, typically, we just have Bill's Quality Cleaning who has bid. There have been a time that we tried to not go, because we didn't get any others, and try to look for a high-organic custodian. That also didn't go too well. The last contract, we had one other company, which was a lesser bidder than Bill's Quality Cleaning, which was walls cleaning. We did go with them, but we had to terminate that contract because they didn't show up, and when they showed up, they didn't do a great job. So, we did terminate that contract, and we asked Bill to fulfill the remainder of that contract, as being the other quote who bid on that contract, and he did take that on without an increased cost from his previous contract.
How close is this to his previous contract?
Going back a number of years, and I kind of had quite a few of them pulled up, I believe it was $433 was what he quoted for a number of years, like almost a decade. So, he did have an increase in the last contract that went to 712, and then he does propose to keep that number for the remainder of the five years without an increase.
And there again, cleaning materials go up in cost. I mean, everything has gone ridiculous. I mean, it's, and that's probably a good share of it. You know, I'm sure his insurance goes up, and everything goes up. Fuel goes up, it all goes up.
He does provide his own cleaning products.
Yeah, that's what I mean. He's purchasing the cleaning products, and that's all going up. I, I honestly, I think if, if we can't keep the city hall looking clean, the liquor store looking clean, the police department clean, it does reflect on what this city is like.
On the liquor store, I mean, I think that's only once a month that they're doing that cleaning, as, as far as I understand, right? So.
Totally clean, but disinfected these days is the major thing.
Yep.
Can we get to that page? The liquor store is monthly.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, that's done on a lot less frequent basis for the liquor store. Man, I'm fine with that being done once a month like that.
It's the police department and city hall are weekly.
Right.
And that's, there's, because there's carpeting in this building, and there's more things in this building than there is in a liquor store. The liquor store is stained concrete, so it's a lot easier to clean. So, there's a lot less for them to have to clean. The back room, most likely, is staff is sweeping that up and cleaning it on a daily basis. It's the main part of the building. So, there's a lot less for, lot less square footage for them to clean there than there is here. I, I have no problem with paying it. I think it's, I think it's an asset to, you know, people will walk in here and they see a clean building, and it's clean. I don't, I don't totally disagree that they don't need to come in here and vacuum this every time, but he's, you're not gonna, you're not gonna find some cleaning company that's only gonna come in and clean every other week. It's just, you can't even get the estimates to do it for every.
Not someone that's licensed anyway.
Yeah. So, I, I think we have a, I, I think it's a conundrum. You could put this all for advertisement till the calls come home, and it ain't gonna change. I think we spent $4,000 on other foolishest things, the, you know, if 4,000 isn't, isn't, then it, I mean, if it was 40,000, yeah, I definitely want to sit down and have a conversation. But $4,000 a year, that.
Yeah, I mean, and that's the thing, is it's one thing to spend $4,000 one time, but it's another thing to spend $4,000 every single year for, you know, 20, 30, 40 years.
Maybe in five years from now, or five years from this contract, something. Maybe there's gonna be some more people come out and want to clean.
Right.
That's $4,000 more. That's not what the, the cost, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just, yeah, I know. I was just saying.
He's trying to save 4,000 by going every other week. He's trying to save four thousand by going every other week. I'm just saying for four thousand dollars, it isn't worth tipping over the apple cart. It ain't worth it.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, that's a fair argument.
If, if it was forty thousand, I'd totally say, yeah, let's re-entertain this. But the problem is, is there's less and less people doing these things. I have a gal that cleans my house. I'm sure she would love to do it, but I'm sure she's not insured and bonded. And she comes from Wisconsin, so she's not going to want to come over here in the middle of the night to come and clean this place. You know, I'm, I'm sure she is licensed and bonded. I mean, she did, but my point of the matter is she does a fabulous job. But I've had cleaners come to my house and they're all the same rate. It's three hundred and fifty bucks every time they come and clean, just my house. There's a lot more cleaning going on in here.
When I look at these prices, I don't, I honestly don't think they're that bad. Like when they're broken down like this.
Yeah, I don't think the pricing is bad. I just think the frequency is what we could, yeah, that's all I'm saying. The price, price wise, I mean, I don't have a problem with the price. No, I'm just saying that I'd like to do it less frequently is my, my point.
So I know last time we talked about this and was there a concern about the timeline? And we wanted to get this finalized by a certain date so that you guys didn't have to clean. Was that the end of this month?
So the current contract does end the end of April, April thirty first.
Okay.
If we were to go out for requests for proposals and for new contract terms and scope of work, I would request that we extend the current contract at least through May thirty first. Otherwise, we won't have cleaning services for a period of time. A request for proposal would go on the April, the next meeting, which would be April fourth. And as we accept bids for that, the award would not occur likely until the second meeting in May.
I don't know. I want to make a motion. We could renew this contract. I mean, it's, I think it's a moot point. I mean, we can always, we're signed in for five years locked in at this price. It ain't going to go up in five years. That's what it is. I think that's a pretty fair deal.
I'll second that. I have a motion from Councilman Lundin to move forward with the contract as it's written. And I have a second from Councilman Collison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, aye. And I think that's a motion that carries forward to one.
It's hard to get people to work. So I think it, the fact, the fact that he's putting in.
I just think if we went out for rebids, we're not going to get anybody to bid.
And he may not want to extend his contract at that point. So.
I mean, maybe in, maybe in five years we look at it again.
You guys are free to disagree with me. You don't have to, you don't have to keep explaining it.
No, it's okay. I just, it's just more discussion.
No, I know, I know. No, I'm just looking for, looking for savings anywhere we can get them. So. All right. Do these numbers stay the same? Are they, or do I need to change that one because we removed K two? Or can I, or when I'm calling out these, these numbers here for, so is this K four or is it really K three now?
It's K four.
So, okay, so we'll keep the numbers the same. Okay. So moving on to business item K four, resolution to consider approving illuminate Isani five-year plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So in front of you, we've got a proposal, kind of mapping out maybe what the next five years of illuminate Isani looks like after we've been through the first year. Obviously, it was the first time we did the event and we didn't really have plan in place other than what we did last year. So we're just trying to identify some things and propose the, the details for this twenty twenty-three event and then kind of what our approach is moving forward and how we're going to try to get back to making the event whole and self-sustaining as it is a enterprise fund. And it has to become self-sustaining at one point. So kind of the dates this year, in twenty twenty-two, we did nine days in a row. It was ten if you counted the, the staff and council kind of soft open where we walked through and, and checked things out. And so we're proposing to do two separate weekends in a row, Thursday through Sunday. We'd be open from five to eight. This last year was, during the week, it was five to nine. And then on Friday, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday was till ten PM. But the attendance, you know, really dropped off seven thirty, eight o'clock. So we wanted to cut back on that and, you know, be aware of our time and make more efficient use of our time. So. Proposing to do the same ticket prices we did last year, twelve dollars for general admission, which was thirteen years and older. Ten dollars for senior and military, five dollars for youth ages seven to twelve, free for kids six and under. We plan to continue to give free tickets to anybody in this Cambridge Isani School District or the Christian School and any of those other schools. We did have some homeschool families that reached out and we accommodated them as well. But try to continue doing that promotion to get the kids there excited about it. And then that brings in their, their parents, grandparents, and they're the ones paying for tickets. So. And then also off, continuing to offer two dollar off discounts on liquor store purchases. And then no cash ticket sales on sites. We'd take, continue to take credit cards on site for walk-up sales. Other things to, to consider for this next year is shifting a layout to the south to eliminate interference with the sledding hill. I think that was one comment we heard, you know, the, where we had the fence that kind of encroached on the sledding hill. So we want to be aware of that and we're going to try to shift it to, to avoid that. And then the other big switch would be our ticketing platform. So switching from Eventbrite to a recreation-based software called Sports on Web. It's a software I've used in my previous employment. And it can do multiple things that would benefit other areas of the city and city staff being more efficient with our time. So it would allow for ticket sales. It would be just like this year. You'd have a paper ticket or it'd be on your phone. We'd be able to scan it on our phone, but it'd also allow reservations for park shelters, the community center, all the food and merchant vendors. They could all register online. It'd streamline, streamline the process. City staff would not have to, you know, take all the phone calls, vet out all these applications for different events and different vendors or whatever. It would all be in-house in one software.
Can I ask a question on that quick?
Yep.
So what's the cost on that? The extra cost versus the Eventbrite?
So the cost for the platform, the first year, there's a little bit of fee for setting up. So the first year it'd be forty-five hundred dollars and then after that it's, I believe it was three thousand a year going forward.
So what was the Eventbrite in comparison?
So Eventbrite, they had, so I believe council wanted to absorb the credit card processing fees and, and not pass it on the consumer. So between that and then there was also there, the fee that Eventbrite collects for using their software, which is a per-ticket price. And I think it was about nine thousand dollars total that we spent on, on fees altogether. Whereas the, the software, Sports on Web, it would be one flat fee for everything. And so no matter how many tickets we sold, there wouldn't be a per-ticket fee. It's just the yearly license. So it'd be really big cost savings and we can spread that out to share the, the software costs with Parks and Rec and also the community center and kind of split it up. So I think it's just.
So is that baseline fee, is that the forty-five hundred dollars or is there another fee on top of the forty-five hundred?
Nope, nope. So they don't have credit card processing in this software. So we would use whatever we already have at City Hall that we're using to process credit card payments. It would be plug and play with that. So the forty-five hundred dollars would just be for the first year is the setup cost. And then going forward, it's like three thousand or thirty-five hundred a year. So it's just one flat fee. Doesn't matter how many transactions you do. It's not.
How many events for the whole entire year?
So I, I do have some numbers on like the community center. Last year, we had two hundred and fifty-two reservations. And so like we could do those all online. Cause right now this, people call in, we check the books, see what dates available. There's not an online calendar. This would have an online calendar. People could see what dates are open. They could fill the application, submit payment. We could have it set up like, if it's a special event, city staff would have to review the application when it comes in. We could give the okay and then it would charge a card. Other, other things, like if it's just like a birthday party or whatever, we could have it set up where they just pay the fee. It automatically goes on the calendar and we don't really have to do anything with it. So.
So it's really a no-brainer. It's costing less and you're getting more service?
Right.
Okay.
The only thing I got when you talked about the fees, the twelve dollar fee and ten. The biggest complaint I got was that charge for the tax. And I did bring this up. I think I brought it up to Stephanie and I said, I'd rather see us just flat rated at twelve bucks. If we have to eat the tax or we adjust it so it's eleven fifty-nine and that, and then it's, so it's twelve bucks when you get the tax. That's the only complaint that I seen.
I saw a lot of complaints that it was too expensive in general for what it was.
Most people that I talked to said it was a lot cheaper than going over to Sam's Christmas Village, the other one on the river. Cause it cost me three hundred bucks by the time I went over to Sam's Christmas Village with my wife and my son and, and daughter-in-law and my two other daughters and my grandkids. It cost me three hundred bucks. That ain't, this ain't expensive. And the people that I talked to who brought their grandkids here, they thought it was fabulous. Just for them to go get pictures taken with all the lights with their grandkids, they said this, this by far outweighs it all.
Okay.
And I mean, and I, and I, and Luke, I, my, the complaint that I got was for the expense was the twelve bucks plus the tax.
I, I heard that too, yeah.
That was the complaint that I heard mostly. So I, I think that we should, if it's, we're going to charge them twelve bucks, that's what they get charged on their card. End of, end of story, discussion is done. You know, I don't think twelve dollars is out of line. I didn't think it was at that point. I, I think maybe the age. Thirteen, yeah, you're getting kind of old, but, you know, twelve-year-old kids, I don't know. I, and that's not just my, you know, just my gut feeling. That's all that is. It's not, you know, this was, you know, I, I hate to say it, this was a brainstorm of mine. It goes back five, six, I don't, I don't know if Miss Wood even remembers. It goes back quite a ways when I brought this up. You know, I would like to see us try to get more. I didn't, I didn't see anything about Best Western as a sponsor out there. Maybe they were, I just didn't notice it. I think we did a lot for that company and I'd like to see them do something for us back then. That's what I'd like to see more of that come in. You know, now, I mean, last year when we started this thing, it was kind of midstream. Now we got a lot more time to deal with this.
And that's, that's really why we're here today and why we've proposed a five-year plan, not only to show how we can make it whole, but also so that we can plan ahead and.
Yeah, the sooner we can reach out to, to businesses and they can allocate their sponsorship money earlier in the year before, you know, they have a certain amount set aside and then they already hit it and then.
You know, I mean, you know, reach out to Target Corporation, Walmart Corporation, Menards. I mean, I was surprised, you know, the Connexxus Energy, what they did in that, you know, that their centerpiece was huge.
And they're already.
They are, they already gave us a verbal that they will come back again with the same amount.
So I mean, that's, and that's awesome. You know, I know I, I talked to the owner of the company I work for. He's more than willing to, it's just we didn't have a lot of time from the time I got the packet to when he got to it. He would probably buy his si, his light, his light package. And, you know, however, we got to work it from there, but he would probably buy that and donate it to the city.
And that's also the value in moving forward. You'll see the three packages that we laid out and purchasing things ahead of time because it allows us not only to save money, but to plan ahead and help companies plan ahead if they want to sponsor a lot sooner. So they know already when they walk through the lights in December, what they're sponsoring for next year.
You know, one of the things that I did say and I, and I talked to Mayor Gordon about this when we were out there. I'd like to see us go out and I don't care what the electrical inspector says because we're not running wires through it. But we could go, Public Works could go out if we lay out how this thing is going to be, general vicinity. We could put irrigation boxes down, trench PVC pipe from power pole to those boxes. Instead of having all them damn cords laying on the ground, because I don't care what you do, kids are going to run around the backside of them lights. And the more, the more that we can just keep that stuff in and it's very minimal cost to do that stuff.
That is part of our plan with the splash park renovations.
The infrastructure for the splash park when the electrical gets brought in, we're planning on.
But that's, you know, that's the only thing. And I, and I, and I'll tell you what. I was actually very shocked to what we had for what we put into it. I was impressed with that. And kudos to the staff and everybody Stephanie knew. Everything you guys, Jordan, you guys put into this thing, you did an awesome job with it. And I, I was actually rather impressed for, you know, being the first time doing this thing. I mean, I went to Sam's Christmas Village when they first opened up. And I hadn't been there for a couple of years and I was there last year, that thing just exploded. It's thousand times. They got these stupid marshmallow sheds. You don't even sleep in them. And you pay fifteen hundred dollars a night to go sit there and roast marshmallows. Are you kidding me? And their people are doing it. I'm like, I don't want that. But I mean, I, I think the, the staff did a fabulous job on it.
I have a few questions. So how many are we going to be open the same amount of days as last year?
It would be eight days compared to nine. So last year we had, it was, first day we were open to the public was Saturday, the tenth. And then we closed Sunday, the eighteenth.
Okay. And then minus one hour each day. So you're going to close it up.
One to two hours a day. But like the Eventbrite app had had analytics on there so we could see attendance real time every night, seven thirty. I mean, it just, it hard nosed.
The night that we, that we had our highest night, I was hoping to break one more and I knew we needed twelve more people or whatever. And it hit eight o'clock and I just text Jordan. I'm like, darn it. Cause we knew.
That's, that's the time they check in. They scan their ticket, correct?
They can scan in until eight and then when, whenever people are done, that's when we would close. It was, we would just close the front gate at eight and then whoever's in there, they would stick around until.
So the data you have, the Eventbrite is going to tell you when they scan in. So if you saw a drop off at seven thirty, that means that's when they scanned in. That doesn't mean that's when they were there till.
But when you're there and there's only two hundred people there, whatever on some of those nights where the, during the week was why we're considering not doing during the week is you can just look out and see there's, hey, there's ten people here and nobody else is.
And most people would clear out by nine. Like it was empty, like you could shut it down at nine and nobody was there.
Yeah.
Well, my question was, so if we're taking a day off and a few hours off of the event, but how are we estimating a forty percent rise in income? That's their revenue and that, that's where.
Because of the great feedback we got from the people, it kind of made a point to, to talk to people as they're coming and going, asking what they thought. And really the only negative feedback I heard from a few people was they weren't able to pay cash. That was really the only thing. So I think, just think the word of mouth is going to spread. We're going to target our advertising more towards the Twin Cities to try to get the traffic coming north, so they don't have to go to Duluth. So I just feel like we've got.
I like that idea.
I think you.
If we went forward with this, I, I wanted some advertising in the Twin Cities because we need to draw more in order to hit that number in order for all these figures to, to work. Otherwise, we're taking, we could be taking a considerable chunk out of the city budget to run this program and.
So that's what we were trying to figure out, you know, we want to get the, you know, make the event whole, make it self-sustaining. Years two and three of an event is really critical. You know, if we don't show growth or don't show that we're, you know, trying to make it better. Like if people come back years two and three, like it's the same thing, they're going to say, well, I don't want to come back again.
A five-year plan, we're not held to a five-year plan. This is just.
It's just kind of a general outline. Yeah, just trying to show you kind of what our path is, what we're anticipating. Like I said, it's kind of an assumption just based off this first year of data that we have, but yeah.
I guess.
And we had a, sorry.
I have, I have a lot more prim outlook on it. So we had almost everybody that I talked to about illuminate Isani said they probably wouldn't be going back because it was too expensive for what they got and for value out of it. And a lot of people are also concerned because they didn't realize that the city was paying for it. They thought it was going to be all sponsors. So I, I, I mean, for me personally, I don't think I can, I can ever vote for the city to keep putting more money into, into this without getting sponsorship. I just, I, I, I look at the five-year plan and I don't think the numbers are, I don't think the revenues are going to go up. I think they're going to go down personally, just because the feedback that I've gotten. You know, if you ask someone in person, they're always going to be optimistic and say, yeah, it was great. We'll be back next year. Because that's the easiest thing to say. Nobody wants to tell you the hard, honest truth. So, I mean, I, I guess I just don't see the revenue being there. And we have, you know, we have storage costs, staffing costs, planning costs, cost for assembly and disassembly. There's cost, cost, cost. But the biggest thing is your revenue. And if we don't see a revenue increase, we're just going to keep throwing money into this. And it's, it's just hard to see because I don't, I just don't, I just don't see the revenue there in the future. I mean, I, I get we have to keep investing, but if we're not doing it responsibly and we just blow all this money and it's, doesn't work, then we're the ones that have to answer for it, you know? So I would like to see more focus put on the sponsorships and people donating on anything that we actually add to it. Now, there was a item in there, I think it was like thirty-eight hundred dollars for audio equipment. Now, I looked at that and you guys paid almost three thousand dollars or something that year, this year, just to rent it. So that makes total sense to buy that because you can use it for another event and I'll totally get behind buying that. But as far as, you know, paying for a bunch of displays, you know, we could have, we could spend another hundred thousand dollars and have half a PD building full of stuff and then the thing just doesn't bring in any more revenue and that's, it's a risk, you know? And then the fencing also, that was, that was a large expense. Would we use that for anything else if we, if, if it did tank, say? Like what are we going to do with the stuff if it tanks and we just can't make our money back?
You know, that's, the rental company that we did, they got the fence from, they, they said, you know, if you're going to continue to. Um, you know, that's, the, the rental company that we did, they got the fence from, they, they said, you know, if you're gonna continue to do the event year after year, you know, you're gonna pay for it in three years. They said a lot of cities are, are keeping it, especially in the metro area. Um, if they have some sort of major, um, event where they gotta cordon off an area, they can quick put it up. It's a lot of Public Works departments just have this fence sitting.
I did speak with Matt Sylvester regarding the fencing and we will be using it if we get to purchase it um, for the splash park construction project, because that's what that kind of fencing is, so that'll save, well, well, some of the costs will be put to that project then. And then also.
Though to the people that are constructing the plas- splash pad?
Have them take that off the quote, hopefully. Um, but also, um, for the street dan- or the street dances as well as, um, Jubilee Days. I know barricades are a big issue, we talk about it all the time. So, um, instead of continuing to have Public Works make more and more barricades for everything, we can use this fencing with barricades, but really, um, prevent people from walking where they shouldn't be. So I think we have multiple uses that we could use this fencing for.
Okay. And then you also have to consider the storage costs of that fencing. That fencing's gonna take up a lot of room and every cubic foot that you have in a building that's occupied costs money.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest storing that stuff outside.
Oh, right, it has to be inside, that's what I mean, and that's gonna take up a lot of space.
No, I, I don't think it would have to be stored inside, it's, it's, it's galvanized fencing, so it's intended to be outside.
What about the black cover that's on it?
That would come off, it's just zip tied to the fence.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I had some of the same type of concerns that, that Luke had and, and actually George. I mean, it was, when I did the number, at fifty-two percent revenue increase was what we had projected in here and that, to me, that seemed to be kind of seen with, uh, with rose-colored glasses, so. I mean, I get we can advertise to the metro and, but I mean, that, that to me, that was, that was pie in the sky thinking there, so. Uh, do we do, did we do forty-seven or forty-nine? I saw two different numbers in there for, for revenue.
I did update, there's the one I forgot to include, uh, cause it wasn't on the, the one sheet we had, um, to account for the uh, revenue we took in from like the food and merchant vendors, so that was the difference there.
Okay, so we did, so total, we did forty-nine. Uh, and we spent last year a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars and I guess, I was really under the impression that, that we were gonna have an initial investment and, and I wasn't a fan of this anyway. I was more of a fan, kind of along what you were just saying, is that I wanted businesses to, you know, we put in the power for you, we get all the, the pad ready to go. And then you bring in, you know, your, your structure for, to advertise your business or to be a part of the community, you know, this, you know, McDonald's has a, a booth or something, I mean, it just, you know, you would do your own, each business could do their own light displays or purchase a light display and, and put it out and do more of a, a community involvement and putting the whole thing together. That way you're not having to hire seasonal people and you're not having to store a whole bunch of light displays, which, you know, we're now seeing are, are issues, so. Um, so yeah, I mean, I guess that was always the impression that I was under was that, okay, well, if we're gonna do it this way, then it was a one-time investment into that initial startup and then we would use the money that was coming in to pay for the growth. Uh, and it looks like we basically, basically just covered our expenses for the year last year. We really, and I don't know what we have in that fund right now, Mike, if you've got a number on that or, you know, do we, do, are those expenses covered out of that hundred and forty-nine and we've got, you know, forty-nine thousand sitting there in, in the bank right now that we can use for next year or?
No, no, that fund is in the hole.
Okay.
Yep, that was the, kind of the intent originally, is that it would be in the hole initially. Um, and the target was five to seven years to be an enterprise fund status.
Yeah, I mean, this is not, not something that I guess I was looking to, to continue to spend money on year after year after year. Uh, and, and basically the first year, we barely covered our, our initial costs that we're looking at for next year. I mean, it's, um, you know, we're talking next year, if we don't change anything, we're talking about forty-eight thousand dollars in cost. And if we do the same amount of sales, we're, we're at break even and so.
And then you gotta factor in storing all this stuff costs money too, and that's a, that's a cost that's not in here, but it does cost money. So we're, you're never gonna get your hundred thousand dollar initial investment back and uh, it's just, it's just not gonna happen without outside sponsorship being the main focus, it's not gonna happen.
Well, we were planning on pursuing all those sponsorship, sponsorships as much as we can. The, the one plan we laid out that we recommended was so we could try to buy all these displays at one time, get more bang for our buck, have more opportunity to sell those instead of every year, like, all right, we gotta order these extra ones. The shipping's coming from overseas, so it's, it's more expensive. So we're trying to do it so we had the less, least amount of cost, but for the most benefit, I guess, for what we're getting for the displays and then we'd have the opportunity to, to go ask the businesses. Like there was one in there for a tractor, hey, go to Minnesota Equipment, would you guys wanna sponsor the tractor display? Um, and take that on and we can do custom colors on that, so we can do green and yellow, for instance, you know, like that's stuff that we would try to sell as part of the, you know, going after the sponsorships, hey, uh, there was somebody that got engaged this year, so like if there's one that, you know, we can find that looks like a ring or a diamond, like, hey, uh, maybe Chilson Jewelers, would you wanna do, do something like that? So we can try to pick out displays and we can try to target some of those businesses that maybe that a display makes sense for them where they'd be interested in doing. So I think that's where we're, we're just trying to iden- identify, how, how can we get all that stuff upfront? So we don't have to keep paying the same shipping cost over and over again.
As well as we can't ship that stuff here in a week. I mean, it's not like Amazon, we're ordering it, it takes them a month or two to make it. Then it takes three months to six months to get here. So it's not like in October, we can talk to Chilson and they pay, we wanna, like, it doesn't work that way.
Right.
I also think we need to consider that we had four thousand guests this year at the event and our MSA is much, much, much higher than that. So if you look at the, um, cellphone data that was collected on page three of this, um, you'll see that people are coming from all over the place. Um, a lot of people from Isani and Cambridge, but then also red spots coming from Elk River, um, Coon Rapids, Bram, Mora, um, all over the place. And so, and everything we've heard from people coming out of town, they said they loved it and they were coming back and this is what they were gonna do with their family. So, um, we did hear really great things and I think people do say nice things in person. But when you're at an event like that, you hear it all, so they're not just saying, we wanted good feedback from people. Um, I think that, yeah, we could not invest anymore in anything and I understand your way of thinking with that, but, um, I really know that we will see a decline and we'll for sure lose that money if we don't invest anymore.
Yeah, I, I got no problem with further investment, but if we're gonna invest in buying six or eight displays or anything at a, at a big time, that's another huge risky investment. We have to do it in a way that is responsible. There's a difference between growth and responsible growth. We wanna do it responsibly. As a business, you're never gonna put out, you know, a hundred thousand dollars and hope you make back fifty thousand. You, I mean, even in, it's, it's just not responsible. So if we can get sponsorship of those things, maybe a verbal contract with, say, Chilsons or a company and we can give them an idea of what we want and then we wait until we have a pool of six or eight businesses that will donate and then we can order the stuff that we want, because that's the responsible way to do it. We can't keep dishing out city funding, city money from our taxpayers and then a lot, I heard from so many taxpayers that this was the biggest waste of money outside of the amphitheater that the city has ever made. Because they feel like they're gipped because the, the city pays for it and then they have to pay to see it. So the fact that we're already getting this sort, sort of feedback and the numbers are just not good. I mean, we lost our whole investment last year, basically, you know, it's, we're not making any headway at all. And I don't, I just don't see the numbers going up like what you're projecting, but. I mean, if we, if we could do something with actually getting a, maybe a verbal commitment from six companies and then we could, you know, get those displays that way. And then have them sign a contract once we order them or something like that, because that's the responsible way to do it. There's no money out of our pockets, it's gonna take a little bit longer, but maybe next year, or maybe it'll have to be the year after that we get those, you know, it's.
So that's why we, we're trying to just lay out the different options, so we did have in there, you could order a couple of displays every year. Uh, that was an option we put up, put forward, it wasn't something we're opposed to, it was just, we just thought, hey, if we're gonna buy a bunch, like you can get that many more displays if, you know, what the difference of the shipping cost. That was just what we were trying to lay out, you know, we're not opposed to doing a smaller amount every year, if we can try to sell them ahead of time.
Also, after speaking to many event planners, this wasn't a bust for a first-year event. This is how first-year events go and if you've never run a large event before, um, then you don't know that you're not gonna make all your money back in the first year.
Right.
So this is, that was not the plan, that wasn't the plan that council set forth originally. The agreement, um, as Mr. Becker stated, was five to seven years to make it whole. Um, that was a successful, our goal was twenty thousand dollars in revenues and we far exceeded that. So I don't think that you can say that it was a bad event.
I just think the community has spoken a lot about it being too expensive and they're not gonna go back. So I just don't see, I just don't see us making more money next year, like the projections say. I mean, we might break our costs again, you know, if it costs forty-eight thousand dollars next year to run it, we might bring in forty-eight thousand again. But these numbers, they're, I, I just don't see it happening, there's no way of, what is it, forty percent increase you said?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two percent, there's, just based on the feedback that I heard.
If you're speaking about Facebook, it was the same seven people we kept track, it was seven to nine people. So, um, I don't think you can just gauge it off of the bad comments, because there are a lot of people who were very positive about it.
Gauge for anything.
No, I know, but I got messages about it too, but yeah, I mean, I, I get it. I just think if we can responsibly do it.
I don't disagree with you, Luke.
Yep.
But it was never, ever intended. Originally, twenty thousand dollars is what they were thinking bringing in, they brought in forty-nine thousand. That's double what was originally said. Anytime a major event like this starts, go look at when the first rodeo was in Isani. Do you know where the first rodeo was held in Isani? Why don't you? You're old enough to know that.
I don't know.
It was held right across the railroad tracks, right over here, in the old bus garage parking lot. And where is it at, where is it at today? Where is the, no, stop before you say another word. Where is it at today compared to was when it started day one? If they had a thousand people at the first rodeo, it's a thousand times more than it originally was. It was a one-day event. It grew and it's growing and it grows every single year. I, I just, to, to say, your statement, what you're saying is totally off-base. I, I can project that housing's gonna come back next month, I can project that all day long. Is it a fact? No, it's not. It's not a fact at all. I could project that housing's gonna come back six months from now. Is it? We won't know until six months from now. We are not gonna know what this is going to do. I am gonna tell you right now, I talked to every person, I went out there, for two days I went out there and I talked to people about what they thought of it. That was my specific reason for being there. I didn't wanna be out there, it was freezing my hind end off. I went out and asked these people. I never got one complaint other than the fact that it was, they paid twelve dollars and they got charged that tax. That was the complaint I got. And I was there with the people that were there. And I, I did talk to a few who says, well, I didn't, I thought it was gonna be more and I said, well, you know, it's the first year, yeah, you're right. I wanted also this whole thing to get piggybacked onto Bentleyville. And he is all more than willing to help us work on that. Which is huge. Drive up here, come here and visit, then go right up there, or go up there and come back and visit through here. He has no problem doing that. But I'm sorry, I don't have the time to go sit and try to chase him down to get it done.
Yep, I have no problem with.
But it's, it's not, it's, you, you, to make a statement saying, I, I have all these complaints, I have all these complaints. There, every person I talked to, the only complaint I ever heard was that it was so expensive because they had to pay that extra two dollars or something for tax. That was the complaint.
How old are you, Luke?
I haven't heard anything.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. The rodeo, I think, has been around forty-seven years or forty-eight years.
Okay, I thought it wasn't that long.
He's not old enough to know that.
All right.
But, and I think the difference in that concept is that the rodeo probably had kind of the same amount of a budget year over year over year, I mean, obviously, over forty-seven years, costs have gone up, but I doubt that they continued to put in. I mean, we put in a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars last year and, and like I said, when I, I was never a big fan of doing it this way. But when I, when we talked about it, I guess I assumed that when we talked about making it whole, it was, we have an initial investment, we hope to get back in five to seven years, not that, you know, we're putting in a hundred and forty-nine thousand this year and that, you know, we'd like to put in, you know, anywhere from seventy-one thousand to another hundred and twenty-five thousand this year. I mean, and then we're expecting fifty-two percent growth if we do that, I mean, that, that just seems to be a, a awfully big risky investment. I mean, it was risky to start with, which is the reason I didn't like the, the approach to how we were doing it. But I guess if, if we're gonna move forward with this, I mean, I'd like to see us, you know, maybe kind of have a hybrid plan where we're, we're, we have now the base of, of a setup for this operation, but you know, now let's kind of bring in maybe some of these businesses to be a part of it and, and really, like what you were saying, as far as, you know, let's, let's go slower and whatever we can get for donations and, and advertisements. I mean, let's, let's go ahead and go about it that way, but, but essentially keep things the same way and, and it, I mean, really the storage part of it was a, a part of this too, that was never even considered. And now that we're, I mean, we've already got, what, two garage, how many garage spaces over at the new PD?
Two bays at PD, but they're not full right now. Like you got the pallet racking assembled, not everything's on the racking, there's still some stuff out in the park. Um, so not everything is fully utilized in the space that it's in, it's kind of just catch-all right now until.
And we're trying to buy time so that we don't have to build that Public Works building for two-point-six million dollars in, in twenty-twenty-five. You know, and we're hoping to utilize part of that police building for Public Works. And so to say that we're just gonna do this, this light show for, and then have to spend more money on a building because we can't fit all of our, our Christmas lights, I mean, that's, that's a problem to me. That doesn't seem like a wise use of space or, or dollars. Yeah, you wanna, yeah, come on up. Just state your name and, and address for the record there.
Press the mic too. Thank you. Uh, just press it.
Keith Shubuleski, Isani, I live county twelve, county nine. So talking about this and my business won't help with the funding, I guess, but it's another option for to eliminate storage and more of a draw. I do fireworks on the side, I own a fireworks company. So that's another option for a draw and it'll take care of your storage problems, cause I bring it on the day of and it goes away.
Sure.
But that was just another idea I had. I did come to eliminate last year, I did enjoy it for what it was. Cost wasn't too much, I guess the tax thing is kind of different. Most events you go, you pay a flat fee type of thing.
Sure.
Unless you run through Ticketmaster and then they charge you the bill. But, yeah, um, that's about all I got, I just, I, I know that fireworks tend to draw more people. We do a couple of winter shows, um, Ice Palace out Delano and, uh, Cannon Falls, I do their winter show as well. They light their Christmas tree with it.
Sweet.
So that's all I got for that. Thank you.
And I, I think I, that's, that's awesome and I think if we continue to reach out to people, we can get that sort of interaction. We can responsibly grow this using, you know, using that, that type of thing, because businesses are looking for ways to advertise. I know there's businesses in Isani that would want their name on something if they have to provide a light, a light display, you know. It's, it's a cheap way to advertise to a lot of people and it's, and it's kind of cool for them. So I think, like I said, if we can responsibly grow this and get a list of six or eight people that would buy a display and then we don't have to use pa- taxpayer dollars to purchase it, we just have to worry about storing it. And I think that's the best way to go and grow responsibly.
Mayor, if I could, if you could please give a summary of what he had shared, I don't think the recording was able to pick up his voice.
Okay.
Just, if you could just give a summary of that, thank you.
How well was I paying attention, I guess, is the question though. Yeah, no, I think, uh, basically the summary was that, uh, he's got a fireworks business that he thinks would be a draw to, to illuminate Isani. Um, and he enjoyed his time there and, uh, didn't have a problem with the cost. Uh, he was, uh, what was your name again? Keith Shubuleski, uh, out on, uh, highway nine and twelve. And I think that was pretty much it. Okay.
Yeah, I guess, I, I mean, we, we put down the three different options, so the one was like, hey, let's not do anything, just see what we can do with that. The medium option, hey, we'll go, you know, get a couple as we go and then the, kind of all out. So I'm, we're not opposed to doing that if we can, you know, we kind of wanna get the dates solidified and all that stuff, so we can start selling and going after those businesses, so I have no problem going that route if that's what council chooses. Um, you know, we're just, we're trying to lay out the different scenarios, so.
Yeah, and I do disagree with you, Luke, on that, I, I think the, there was definitely a lot of people complaining on Facebook that they had to get taxed for it and pay for it when they showed up, so, so I completely understand that and, and, uh, but I do think that the overwhelming ma- majority of people, and, and I walked through with Steve too, I mean, it was a lot of really positive response and it was, I know, you know, for volunteer groups, I mean, I think Travis, we had the Rum River BMX was out, we had F, FAA, I think, or was out there, or FFA. Uh, we had a lot of, lot of community interaction, I think it was a positive thing. I don't think it was a, a bad thing when it happened, I'm just saying that I don't wanna continue to put hundreds of thousands of dollars into this thing every year. I mean, I, I think it's gotta grow from this point and that initial investment, it's gotta grow, grow organically and, and on its own, so.
Don't get me wrong, I, 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 I'd rather see more sponsorship, if you heard what I first said when you talked about it. But I do think we do have to invest something ourselves to help build it. Other as, otherwise it's gonna be. Other as, otherwise it's gonna be a stalemate. I'm not saying go out and spend a hundred thousand dollars, but I'm saying we need to invest in something ourselves for, to do it also. Um, I mean, it's unfortunate, we have a couple pole buildings that are sitting over there by the archy range. I wish we could utilize that for storage because that's huge. But it, unfortunately, that doesn't work that way. But I, it, it, but for him, for, for the staff to move forward, we have to come up with something for they can go out and say, hey, we're doing this this year. We'd like you to, to be a corporate sponsor, X amount of dollars for gold, X amount of for silver, you know, bronze, whatever. Huh?
Platinum.
Yeah, platinum, get it in there, whatever. Uh, you know, and, and also to do that, y- y- you have to, they have to know that the event is happening. Right?
At time. I, I mean, please, advance notice so they can get these things made and shipped.
So I, I do have another idea. So for like wintertime parades, a lot of organizations, I think the ambassador program and all sorts of people have floats. And they decorate them with Christmas lights. I mean, if even this, e- even if we took this year off from purchasing, could we maybe ask them to bring something as a temporary thing for this year to add something new? And then in that meantime, we can work on getting sponsors that will sponsor the bigger displays, which is, I, I agree, we need those. And I'm not saying it's a total bust, but I think we need to slow down on the spending and be a little more responsible. So I don't know if we could ask some of those community things like the ambassador program. I think they'd love to have that there. They would do, you know, it's not great, it's not the perfect thing, but it would be a, a cool thing to add this year for free. And while in the meantime, we can work with other companies to try and get, you know, a big shipping container full of six to eight displays or whatever to add, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, um. The other thing is, you know, we can try to get after some more vendors too. Like there is people that, we did talk about doing fireworks. Some of the other vendors had some ideas, different events they've been to. So fireworks was talked about. Uh, Ferris wheel was talked about. Um, horse-drawn carriage ride was talked about. So trying to find some stuff maybe that other vendors could do, um, that wouldn't necessarily be our cost and they could charge, I mean, additional or whatever. You know, like the horse-drawn carriage rides, they would just, you know, collect a separate fee if they want to take somebody around the park, you know, take them through a loop around. Um, try to have a draw besides the lights to try to bring people into and make the event different, but not, you know, us putting money into. So we're trying to think about some of that stuff. And then the grant, um, East Central Regional Arts Council Grant I applied for, I didn't get, turned in another one by April first. So one of the things in the grant was, um, adding in a band for one of the nights to try to draw more people in. You know, we could try, we tried to do beer and alcohol sales this year and it just was kind of a flop. And we were hoping to try to do something with somebody more local. And we thought, hey, if we can get one night where we can get the Lions or Thunder Brothers to come out and, uh, have a band at the one night and try to have a bigger draw for one, one day. So we're trying to figure out, figure that out and try to get some of the outside funding. Um, and so they, they gave me suggestions on what to change on my next application. So I think, can't say for sure, but I think we got a strong case for, for getting that grant. So, you know, we're always looking for different things. One of the other vendors that was here at the previous cow meeting from, uh, Now That's Waffle, she sent me another community-based, um, grant opportunity that was like a one-time for up to five thousand dollars. It wouldn't be like a recurring, recurring every year thing, but it was like a one-time deal. So we're always open to looking for outside sources of funding. Um, yeah, so, yeah, like it was kind of said, we're trying to just lay out, hey, we're doing the event this year. Here's the details so we can start selling and start getting those people recruited to be a part of the event now as, as opposed to later this fall. So we just want to be.
Sure.
Couple more ideas. You could, I don't, contact the high school choir. They're singing Christmas carols out there.
Yep.
Marching band, marching through the lights around through there.
Yeah. And all, another thing for promotion we talked about was, um, maybe doing a, a float in the Jubilee Days parade with one of our displays or something on a trailer to really advertise for all the out-of-town people that are gonna be there. Now that would be pretty low, low-cost advertising for a pretty big in, impact there.
Snowflake parade, that happens before.
So.
I could see Ms. Wood on the float with the angel wings behind her.
And some of those pieces too, we, we talked about putting out, you know, we could put out the angel wings at some of the street dances or bring some of that stuff out to other events too, just to kind of, you know, if we got it, we can use it and, you know, I can have a booth set up or a table at some events and, you know, have information on illuminate Isani if people stop and talk to us. Like there was, uh, one, the gentleman that owns the tree farm right, right on the edge of town. He said that he'd be interested next year in, in being a sponsor and, and maybe selling some trees out there too. So, I mean, we're, we got leads, we just gotta make sure we have the event so we can chase them down and, and wrap some of that stuff up, so.
So I, I have a question that, uh, was also commonly asked last year about the dates. So a lot of people thought that it should go further, uh, closer to Christmas because it's, I mean, Christmas is the pinnacle time of Christmas lights. So a lot of people, I got the feedback a lot, was that people thought maybe it should start like a few days later, but go a few days later. Obviously not to Christmas because you don't want to staff it on Christmas and attendance might not be worth it. But I don't know, what was the schedule this year? The expected dates?
Uh, it was the seventh through the tenth and then the fourteenth through the seventeenth, I believe. Is that what I said?
So could you do like the twenty-second and twenty-third and two, or, I mean, I.
That's pushing it too close.
It's very hard to get volunteers to show up.
Okay.
On those.
Sure.
Dates.
That makes sense.
And vendors as well, so just.
Yeah, some of the other vendors that would come, they've got other, other things that they do. So they were, you know, we're trying to get the vendors to be there all the time. We had some that were just there on the weekends and stuff, so we thought we'd get more people that were interested if they were, you know, if they could set up Thursday through Sunday and they don't have to be there every day during the week and only have two, three hundred people there and they didn't really make any money. Um, so it was just kind of a little combination both to be able to spread it out for two full weekends and, and then, you know, have some days during the week too, just to give people options, but not to have. It was also a lot for, for me personally to be out there ten days in a row. It was kind of taxing on top of all the setup. So just to have a little break during the holiday season, during the week, and, you know, just be able to.
Yeah, that's putting that, that, that week before Christmas Eve. That's almost as perfect as it's gonna get.
Okay.
I, I don't think you want to push it into the Christmas Eve.
What were the dates last year? I don't remember exactly, but.
Ten through the eighteenth.
Okay. I just know that was a common question, like why does it not go closer to Christmas? But I get it with the weekend schedule, it ma- makes sense that it really can't if you're trying to optimize weekend.
We'll take all those people as volunteers.
Oh, right, right, of course, yeah. It's just, it was just an interesting question.
But so the other thing we thought was too, A, we'll kind of do this and if, if we see the growth and we say, hey, we think we can have another weekend and really impact sales and have more stuff. But we thought if we kind of focus it down to two weekends, if we have two weekends that are just really busy, you know, instead of having those weeknights where it's two or three hundred people or the one night it was raining and it was like fifty people. You know, if we can just really condense it down and have more of an impact for the vendors that are there and the people that are there, they say, well, like, well, this is really.
Can we reach out to some of these volunteers and just throw a bio about staying open for that following weekend, the twenty-second and twenty-third of December? Because it is just before Christmas Eve and Christmas.
So yeah.
It's the day before Christmas Eve. I mean, that's the day before Christmas Eve. People are going, gone. They're going places.
We also will need to pay staff to be there and that's the hard part to get enough people to commit to working over the holidays, so.
So like the volunteer groups that we had this year, I think they were, all were vocal about wanting to come back. It's just then finding the extra people, the new people, or if the, somebody wants to double up and do more than one date. But yeah, so I mean, we'd have to just reach out to people. That's part of why we want to get going now, so we can make those connections, build on it all, all summer long, spring, summer long, so we're set and ready to go for the fall. Heading into winter, so.
I think it was, I was pretty impressed myself. I know what it's like to plan an event and have it carry on for a long period of time and, and watch it grow. When I first had their summer spectacular, when I started Rum River Rods, I had thirty cars. And now we're running out of space. This'll be our twelfth year, so. I didn't throw, throw the hat in right away, so.
I'm not throwing the hat in, I just think.
Give it a, two, three years of my time and investment on, on my, my part and
I don't want to throw the hat in either. I think it, it's just one more year to see, anyway.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think any of us are talking about throwing the hat in. I think it's, it's more of how do we, how do we grow it responsibly? And that's, I think that's really the, the question.
Well, I think, like I said, we have to invest something. I'm not saying we got to go out and buy twenty more lights, setups, whatever. I think we need to invest into a couple different ones and I think we need to start aggressively going after sponsorships. That was the whole object behind this. You know, I, I, I visualize seeing the high school coming on here doing a Christmas play out there in the amphitheater. I mean, that's, I, I, I see it. I mean, it's just like you watch the movie Field of Dreams. You build it, they will come. Yet it, it, the first year starting, people got to start looking at it. I, I think it's, I think it's, it's gonna grow. I, I, I honestly, I think, I feel in my heart that it's gonna grow.
I do too.
I just, I, but I'm not ready to throw a toll in on it. You know, after the five-year plan, like Mike has talked about this thing, if it doesn't, I'll eat my own words. And he's right at that point. It, it, I, I, I honestly think you're gonna, it's gonna do better this year than you thought it did last year, than you would.
So what do we do? Go with this option one and then maybe make a hybrid of the option two? Because option one pays for itself, actually has a profit this year. If we invest a little supposed city money, if we don't hit these numbers on option one, what, how, how much higher do you want to go between the two? Or do you want to go all in on option two?
But those, those revenue numbers are exp- are, I don't think the calculations are even, I don't think they're very fair to use those calculations for us to plan with, honest, a fifty percent growth next year.
It's a gamble, I know. I'm not looking at it going.
Here's, here's a, a que- question for Mike. So what's, so what is the actual balance in that account then right now is?
I, I, I'd have to double check.
Okay.
I'm just wrapping up all the audit stuff now, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll have a presentation not too long, but I, I could otherwise send out an email, but.
Okay. I mean, roughly negative a hundred grand or so right now? If you, if you spent a hundred and forty-nine last year, we brought in forty-nine, then.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be, yeah, without, yeah, if you're not asking for anything exact, yes, ballpark hundred grand would be.
Ballpark, we're in the hole a hundred grand so far because we got forty-nine of it back last year. And this, next year we're looking at, you know, into similar expenses of forty-nine. You know, which obviously has to come from, from somewhere to, to foot the initial bill with, which we don't have any money in that account now, but, you know, I guess, do we have any funds budgeted for this? I mean, do we plan on spending more money?
No, so. So special revenue funds are not a budgeted item, right? So this is, this follows the state guidelines generally, except to galling principles. Um, you would budget a general fund, you would budget, um, an EDA fund, you would budget enterprise funds, debt service funds, those types of things. Uh, special revenue funds are not. That's based on their general function. That's not how you do it. You would budget a special revenue fund exactly as we're doing now. Right? Um, it wouldn't otherwise sit in the budget as a permanent position until it became an enterprise fund. Otherwise, this is exactly how you would otherwise go about authorizing staff.
So we don't, so we, we planned on spending more, but we didn't have a, a dollar amount necessarily set aside for that purpose, so. So I mean, that, that to me is, I mean, like I said, I thought that we were gonna make an initial investment. I wasn't a fan of it to begin with and I thought we were gonna make an initial investment and then over time we would, we would recoup that cost. But, uh, but we don't have it in the budget for, for, you know, there are no funds set aside for this money. I mean, it's, that's a concern to me. You know, I mean, I guess, uh, another part of this too, I don't know if we've talked about it yet, but it looks like we're gonna have to have seasonals as well because we're over ta- you know, overworking Public Works and, you know, they don't have enough time between snow plowing and doing that kind of thing. I mean, what do we, I mean, that wasn't an expense that we incurred last year and it will be this year. I mean, what do we expect to, to spend on seasonal employees?
So we had, uh, we did have one seasonal, um, Joel. He helped out. Um, he was the summer seasonal help and he helped out with illuminate um, this year and I think it was, I'm gonna find it on the sheet here. It was about fifteen hundred bucks that we gave out to him. But, but yeah, I mean, we kind of got lucky. We did get some snow kind of towards the, the end of the event, but the setup, you know, if, if we were to get snow when we're trying to get things up and going, uh, that was kind of a concern that, and then.
It's also important to recognize that seasonal staff wages are much more affordable than the overtime. We're paying public work staff to help us set it up, so it actually can be a cost savings in the long run and.
Well, but I don't, I don't know that this, does this budget include any of that time? I mean, that forty-nine or the, yeah, I mean.
It says on there.
Do we have a, let me see, I didn't.
No, like.
Like in the expenses.
Option two says seasonal times for.
Well, I'm saying that the money we spent last year, I mean, we, you know, that doesn't include any of the time that Public Works put into that. I mean, that's a cost that we're not seeing in this hundred and forty-nine thousand that we spent. We didn't account for time that we had to pay Public Works overtime or any of that kind of stuff, right?
That's correct. They got paid, but not through this fund.
See it in this number either. So there's a co- another hidden cost there that we're not, we're not actually seeing. Um, and I guess I, I will okay with, if we want to move forward with kind of the approach that we've got, I'd like to see us maybe do something where we, we limit the city's dollars to maybe twenty-five grand or something like that. And we say, we're gonna spend that if we have community involvement and, and every dollar that we get from, you know, a, a certain business in town will match that with city dollars up to twenty-five thousand or something. So I mean, if we're seeing community involvement where they're interested and they're excited about it, then, then we're also gonna, gonna match those funds. I guess I'd be okay with that, but that's still, still really, you know, I mean, we're still looking at storage issues and, you know, I don't know.
And some of these. Are you saying twenty-five thousand above and beyond the forty-eight thousand of the actual expense of it?
I mean, that's a, I'm just looking for some middle ground here, I guess. I mean, that's, I, I do agree that we have to probably do something if we're gonna continue to see it expand and grow. And I think we have to have some, some input. But I mean, if, you know, we got twenty grand or so this year, I think, in, in donations, I mean, that, that would be some middle ground that I maybe would be okay with, with taking that approach, but, but, I mean, re- really what I would like to see is it's, we're not gonna spend any more money on displays. We're not buying any more displays. What we have is what we have. And if you'd like to buy a display to advertise your business, all you have to do is buy the display and we'll, and store it. And you can put it up every year and it's just the one-time cost. That, I think, would be maybe another alternative that, that, that way we, it will grow hopefully. And, but they have to store it. They only have to pay for it one time. They buy whatever piece they'd like to buy and, and they store it. And then every year it gets put up with their signage on it and, and they only have that one-time cost of an investment to, to be a part of the show every year. So that, I think, maybe would be even a better approach. But, but if we want to put city dollars into it, I think matching community donations is, is something I would be okay with. But, but I really would prefer to see it be all, all businesses doing their stuff going forward.
Well, if matching is an incentive for when they, when you would approach, say Coburn's, we'll match whatever you guys want to donate. That's an incentive for them to donate. That might be a, a good tool to use.
Yeah, right.
And then, um, a lot of these, uh, the smaller line items too, like popcorn and supplies, a thousand dollars. You can get a smaller business, say, I'll cover that. You know? Instead of, maybe they can't afford or don't want the big lighted sign or display.
Right.
But, you know, a lot of these smaller costs, some of the smaller businesses probably could cover that. You start knocking it off a thousand dollars here, giveaway items fifteen hundred dollars, or marshmallows, a thousand dollars.
Yeah, so some of the, some of the current.
You know, Ask Cup Foods if they want to donate the marshmallow roasting stuff.
So some of the current vendors we had this year were already talking about going in together to purchase some of the, uh, giveaway items, so, I mean.
So I mean, that, you start knocking off a thousand here, a thousand there, it's gonna add up.
And I think in order to keep it from stagnant, I mean, we have one person in the audience that wants to add a fireworks display. We have other, there's, like I said, all the people in the parade. We can switch up the layout too, the layout too. So we can add things that are very low cost next year that'll make it more exciting, while in the meantime, we're trying to find bigger sponsors to make these bigger investments because if we can use sponsorship dollars to order these things and just get by this year and maybe we just break even this year again, but then next year we have better displays that didn't cost the city anything. That, that's, that's what I'm getting at here. We can leverage the opportunity that we have for businesses and not cost the city a bunch of money, but still have something somewhat fresh next year. If we look for community involvement like the fireworks or like maybe like a, a parade float or two and then just changing the layout a little bit or having a concert. I mean, those are all low-dollar items that we can do to make it more exciting that aren't gonna cost us an extra hundred thousand dollars right off this year, you know? And if, and if say next year we see that these numbers are correct or it comes in seventy-seven thousand dollars of revenue, well then maybe I'll change my tone, but we don't know. It's only been one year. We can't put another hundred thousand dollars into this just guessing that it's gonna grow in year two, when we have opportunities to make it more exciting for year two and C, for relatively no cost. It just seems like a no-brainer to me.
Um, I think it's also important to consider that the more we're gonna expect to get of donations, the more staff time between Jordan and I is spent on doing that also. So we need to figure out what that. Um, I think it's also important to consider that the more we're gonna expect to get of donations, the more staff time between Jordan and I is spent on doing that also. So we need to figure out what that balance is. Um, not that we're not willing to, if that's what you want us to do, but it does need to be taken into consideration that it is, um, a lot of work to get outside donations and five hundred dollars here and there chipping away is great, but it also is very time-consuming.
I meant for more larger purchases, like a company like Chilsons, for example, that'll buy a ten thousand dollar display. That's, I mean, the more bigger items, because you can send out. Well, it's, it's just an example.
That's, that's kinda large.
Well, yeah, but it's, it's just an example because, you know, a lot of companies, I work with sponsorship through some of my, I do videography and I worked through sponsorship with companies and if they, they see a, a need for it and if they see ROI on it, they'll do it. So if, if you have a company like Chilsons and it's seen by, I don't know how many people attended last year, I don't remember the number, but if it's seen by those amount of people, people will pay for an ROI. So if you're gonna have, say, a ten thousand dollar display and you're gonna display it at this show for ten years, well, it's only costing you a thousand dollars a year to make that much impression, which is next to nothing. So people that understand marketing will understand and will get behind this. And you can send out just an, just a generic email to all these companies. I mean, I, I do it all the time. You make a, you make a nice proposal that looks good, you give them numbers that make sense, and the marketing people will be like, yeah, it's a no-brainer. That's, it's not, I mean, it is staff time, but for larger investments, it is worth that. And it's, I mean, it, it would work.
We did do that last year and so it's not that we haven't sent out, but I mean, we have, I think that it's another good argument to show that the city does need to invest to get more sponsorship because if people, if they know that the city's investing to get people to come and see something new every year, then more sponsors will help with that because they're know it's gonna be a bigger draw. So it's twofold. It's.
I think it also helped that some of the people that we talked to that said they were interested in, in doing something next year is they didn't know what to expect this year. Now they kinda saw what was going on. I think they're more apt to get involved when they saw what it was and the people that enjoyed it and said, hey, I'm, I'd be interested in doing something with you next year. So we have, we have some of those leads. We just wanna make sure we got our d- details pinned down.
Do you have a strong commitment from all the vendors from last year? Are they recommitting for this year?
Yeah, I mean, for, for, um, Walt the barbecue guy, he's, he's in, coming back. The waffle people are in, they're coming back. The apparel vendor, um, bottle, retro bottle cap, they're in for coming back. Um.
Has any new, new vendors approached you about?
I did have. There was, um, some more with the boutique or like the cottage food vendors. There was a cookie lady that wanted to do it and she just didn't have her ducks in a row this year, but, um, it was, um, the cookie kit that I think Josie's family got at four H and so I got her information. I reached out to her and she said, yeah, I wanted to be involved. I just, it was too late for me when I got the information to, to do anything this year. So we have, we have people that I think are ready to, to jump on for, for this year.
And that's exactly the point I'm making. We can, we can kinda coast through this year and see if we can get the big donations to cover these costs. I mean, we have people interested already, so why would we want to put out all this money when we have the opportunity to acquire these sponsorships, which would save the taxpayers a, a boatload of money? Cause this isn't budgeted for, so we're gonna have to levy for it too, in a sense, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, I don't know if we're hearing a, a whole lot of consensus on it. I, I think a five-year plan at this point, five years, I think, is looking too far ahead. I think we, we've gotta focus on what does the next year look like, I think, and see what kinda results we get.
Just like our, a CIP, doing a twenty-year CIP.
Yeah, I mean, I get it, but I mean, I just think the first year.
It gets changed every year, things get pushed around.
Right.
But a five-year plan shows our.
We're trying to target something, right.
Commitment to sponsors.
Yeah.
So.
But I mean, I'm just saying, I don't think we're ready to.
Doesn't mean it can't be altered for every year.
Right. But I don't think we're ready to commit to, hey, we're gonna spend this much for the next four or five years, I think.
Yeah. Well, and like Mike said, we would, we would come back every year for the, for the approval for what the budget would be. That would be something that we would do every year.
We should be clear. The, the five-year plan is to understand a potential path, right? It's same with like a twenty, or twenty, forty-year plan that I put forward. Council's never approving anything more than the immediate year.
Right.
Um, and it should be revisited every year. We should definitely not accept, accept any of these options as a five-year plan and then shove it. It should absolutely be looked at every year. Um, based on what I'm hearing, um, in, in, in trying to find a consensus, I wonder if we shouldn't just stick to twenty twenty-three, option three, which is we don't expand it. We have set that budget at forty-eight thousand eight twenty, right? Which would be roughly equal to what we brought in for revenue for the first year. Dig deep on getting sponsorships, other partners involved. And, you know, if, even if it comes down to it's, we're gonna make the, the pitch that, all right, the city put in the money the first year. We made the commitment the first year, but now we need to see the community and the businesses make a commitment in the second year and we'll see what we do in the third year. But we wanna, we need to see that commitment. Businesses may very well go for that. And if all things are equal at the end of that second year, maybe we can come back and at least say, well, we didn't fall farther behind. And if things go well, maybe we end up thirty grand to the plus, right? We're, that, that negative balance is drawn down. Possible compromise, maybe?
I think, yeah, I mean, I, I like the idea of, of matching funds too, and maybe that's something we can try this, the next year after this. But I think, uh, that, to me, that sounds like the safest approach and I think if we can, if we can also kind of incorporate is, you know, we're trying to sell you a light display for this event. We want you to, to buy it. We want you to store it, but you can put it up, you know, you have a one-time cost and you can put it up every year or we'll put it up for you even, you know, I mean, something, something along those lines and they just have to bring it in and we'll put it up. But, but I think that's, that, that's the approach I think I'd like to see. I just, twenty-five, e- even if it was twenty-five grand, which is, is piddly compared to what is being asked for, that's still a lot of money. I mean, it's, it's, if it's not budgeted for, it makes me sick to even think about.
Yep.
So even if we matched ten thousand this year, we would still be putting on a levy, basically.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I, that's, I don't know if I did a motion to.
I'll make the motion that, that Mike just summarized because I think it's the most responsible route at this point.
I second.
If I may, just to clarify, so that, it's the city putting in the forty-eight thousand and then any of the sponsorships would be towards more light displays in addition to that. It wouldn't be the sponsorships to pay back the city on the forty-eight, correct?
Right, so the sponsorships would be to specifically for buying new light displays.
Okay.
The city will put in the, the forty-nine thousand or whatever that next money is expected to be for our cost. And I don't know, I mean, that maybe we want to think about, do we buy, I think we buy the sound equipment for sure.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, I think we're open to maybe spending a little more if it's to buy the, the, the fencing and the sound equipment. I think that's, that's.
Well, and, and, yeah, and if, and if, and if, you know, staff, if we look, if we think we, that, in looking at this, given this direction, um, if we need to come back in two weeks or four weeks and say, hey, this is, this was the plan, but we, we need to just tweak this.
Yes.
Okay. You know, I mean, that, that's the direction we can work with that.
Then hopefully the city will at least cover its, its initial investment of, you know, the cost for that year and then hopefully with the new light displays, it's enough, you know, from the, the businesses to, um, you know, to keep it fresh enough to where we continue to grow the, the event and, and that'll take care of hopefully the problem with our, our storage issue, uh, that we're worried about as well, so. Uh, so we've got a, a motion from, uh, Councilman Merrill to move forward with that approach.
I second.
And I have a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, uh, moving on to K five, resolution authorizing ad for bid for the twenty twenty-three pavement management project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I guess, uh, this is, uh, simply just taking the, the pavement management project that got authorized to be designed and, and make plans and specs. Uh, they're complete, so it's ready to go out for bids. Um, so if we get the authorization today, we would advertise for the next three weeks. Uh, open bids April twelfth and then hopefully have bid results to bring to you guys to consider at the April twentieth council meeting.
Motion to approve.
I have, I have a question on this one, if I can, quick. Um, so I know we go out for bids. Uh, do we ever negotiate the bids after they come in? Because we have the purchasing power. We are the customers. I mean, if we could even negotiate, say if we have a one million dollar paving job and we negotiate five percent after we get the bid in, say, say a company comes in at a million dollars and we say, well, we can only afford nine fifty, will you do it for that? Do we ever ask that kinda thing? Because, I mean, even a five percent would save our taxpayer fifty thousand dollars. Is that something that we do? Because there's, there are a lot of companies that intentionally price hike for government contracts because they know that cities usually do not negotiate. So I know there's one company in sp- specifically that, um, es- that hikes their estimates thirty percent higher just for government energies. So they're still making more money. So if you drop it five percent, they're still making more than they would usually make for a regular consumer and I think we should use our purchasing power to our advantage to save money. Is that something we ever do?
No, I guess I'm not even sure if that's, it may be legal, I'm not.
You can legally do that, no. You accept a bid, you accept a bid.
By state statute, when we cross, when we cross the threshold of one hundred and seventy-five thousand, based on the engineer's estimate, we have to accept sealed bids and that's it. And then you have to take the low bid so long as they are a qualified bidder. That would be based on the recommendation of the engineer and that's it. That is how it is. That is state statute.
So there's no negotiating.
So if it's a small, if it's a small contract, that would be a city's discretion based on its own purchasing policy, right? So we could be talking about like a, a twenty thousand dollar contract for, uh, new diocese or some, whatever. Yes, you could, you could reasonably do that. You might find that some bidders are not super thrilled about that, but you do that. But on contracts like street projects, uh, pavement management, where we're talking three hundred thousand plus, uh, water towers coming up, those types, that's sealed bids. That's it. That's state statute.
So basically theoretically, the three bidders could just collude on a price and all come together and then you were just stuck paying it is what's.
Well, technically, that exact example is legally, they have to sign things saying they didn't, didn't collude. They, literally, they have to sign things, but, you know, if they're breaking the law, you know, there's not much we can do about it. But yeah, they, legally, it's sealed bids until the minute that the bids are received and we open them all at the same time publicly, let them, everybody know what we got. And, and then we just gotta verify that that low bidder is a responsible bidder that can do the work.
So if, if, say, a bid were to come in and we thought it was astronomically high, could we deny it, but then afterwards, reach out to that company and tell them that we would maybe do something if they reapplied with the, I mean, there's gotta be something that we can do. I understand the state, state law, but there has to be a, some sort of negotiation. Otherwise, it's a, people can just monopolize the whole market and that's, and that's why this road construction costs so much.
Everybody's got a fair, fair chance at putting in a bid.
So, so you, you do, you do have the, the, perfectly the right to reject all the bids. Um, we can't contact them. I mean, we can contact them individually and ask them why their bid was so high and see if there's something weird about the bid or something about the schedule or something about the product we're calling out. And maybe it turns out, oh, we, we better give them four more months to do this work or, oh, we better call it this different mixed design. Um, and then rebid the entire thing again, publicly sealed bids and let everybody try again. But we can't go to them individually and be like, hey, I'll change this for you and I'll give you the project. That, that's just not something we can do.
And if you cancel and go out for a rebid, nine times out of ten, you're lucky to get half of them back that'll bid again.
Sure.
It'll just, they'll, they're, they don't need to play games like that.
Well, they already put their best foot forward. If you're not gonna take it, what are the, why would they waste their time to?
Hopefully they did.
Yeah.
Okay. It was just an idea because we spend a lot of money every year on pavement management and it, it just seems like it's astronomical for.
Well, it hasn't been done. There was a ten-year period or so where it wasn't done at all.
Sure, right.
That's where the issue, that, that's why we're paying for it today, yeah.
I guess I just worry about dishonest contractors and us not having any sort of way to negotiate. It just seems kinda unfair for government to just get.
Yeah, I mean, part of the review that I do is that it at least is comparable to all the other bids that, like, my company gets, you know, with the same type of work. So it's not, we're isolated, you know, our bids came in and they were fifty percent higher than the projects down the street or, you know, that we just got a month ago for a different city, you know, then I'd probably bring it and be like, these are.
Okay.
Yeah, and.
Strangely out of whack.
And, and Jason and I worked on a similar deal on that with stormwater in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. Um, we, both years, we got bids that we just felt were too high. We rejected them both years, two years running, didn't do any projects for that and then kept stacking that stuff up. Came back in twenty nineteen when we had three years of work stacked up. Suddenly, that was attractive enough that we suddenly got very good bids, considerably better than we did in, per unit in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. So sometimes it's a matter of timing. Sometimes it's the scope of work. Sometimes it's how busy is a contractor, right?